I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the moment of silence. First up, roll call.
Alexander.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Zalinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rinkles.
Here.
A president quarters. Next up, a mayor's address.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. I appreciate it. I was just typing up my final notes. This is my address for the 13th. It's been three weeks since we last talked, so it's good to see you all again. I'll start off with news in my office. Seems like there's a lot going on in my office lately. Last month, I was telling you about a new position we created in my office called the constituent service rep. Alex DeHura took over that position, which is basically a problem solver that works for the mayor's office. Oftentimes, we get constituent problems that are detailed and complicated, and it's hard for the mayor or anybody in my office just to do a quick fix and to help them out with it. So, we created this new position, put Alex in charge of it. She's doing a great job. She's been in that position for less than a month, but she's already got a lot of clients and working real hard right out of the mayor's office. So, if the council runs into issues like that, you need somebody to work across multiple layers of city government. Alex is your person. Kristi Orms lives in the first district. She took over as office manager in the mayor's office, which is nice. And then, just this week, we learned that Phil Talon was hired by the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau to become their next CEO, which is great news for Phil. It's great news for Hammond because he's a Hammond homeowner. In fact, he just bought another house. He's moving from Hammond to Hammond. He's moving to the fifth district, so watch out, Councilman Warple. But, I'm just kidding. But, Phil's taken over as CEO at the end of the month. We agreed that May 31st is his last day with the city. We're gonna miss Phil. He's done a great job. He's been with us for over a decade now. He's been in the role of chief of staff for six, seven years, something like that. Done an excellent job. He'll do a great job as CEO. I've been expecting this. Once I heard, once I knew Phil was applying for the recently created position, I expected him. I know he was in second the last time they had a CEO search, so I didn't take a rocket scientist to figure out. He was probably in a pretty good position once he applied again. So, I've been prepared for this. Phil's been turning over with me, and I'm gonna basically act as chief of staff and mayor until further notice. I don't know what the plan is. I'm not gonna fill it right away, though. So, I'm gonna see how long it takes for me to crack under this new position. I'm always pushing cuts on my staff, and I have an opportunity to do it right in my office. I'm gonna see if I can make it work. So, if not, I'll have the chief of staff, and I'll be talking to you guys down the road about it. But, for right now, I'm doing it. So, anyway, congratulations to Phil Talon. It's great to have a Hammond kid in that role because we do a lot of work with the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau if it's being run the right way. And I think Phil's gonna... Holy... You okay? And I think Phil's gonna do a great job in that role. So, congratulations, Phil Talon. And, anyway, so I'll go on. Activity log over the last few weeks. I had a meeting with the CEO of Horseshoe Casino Hammond, Bill Gustafson, and his attorney to discuss coordination issues between Hammond Water Company and Horseshoe Casino. Horseshoe uses a lot of our land up there, land that belongs to Hammond Water Company. And, as we all know, Hammond Water Company is the most valuable asset owned by the city of Hammond. Some people say it's worth over $300 million by itself, and it makes good money. And, quite frankly, we want to make sure that it has room to grow. And, that's what we were talking with the CEO of Horseshoe about. It's also a good opportunity. He was walking us around, showing us some of the newer things they're doing, and I think they're doing a good job. And I know Bill's a great guy. So, anyway, I know we're all pulling for him. You know, the new casino on the south side of Chicago off of Halsted's gonna be opening up within the next few months, I imagine. The casino in downtown Chicago just opened up. I know it's no secret to the council. We've been talking about the revenue losses we've been experiencing. It's about $10 million annually so far. That's not done dropping. $10 million a year is not done. So far, we're losing $10 million a year, every year. I'm not sure if it'll ever come back, and I think it's wise for the council to think the same way as when you see that gaming revenue. I would not assume that we're gonna go back to the glory days. I don't see it. I don't see it. So, it's coming to grips with reality, and that's reality. So, anyway, had a meeting with the president of Bishop Knoll Institute, Paul Mulaney. Had a good meeting. I know there's a lot going on in our school city right now, but the good news is Bishop Knoll's thriving, and it's a Hammond High School. They're doing great. I know that some of the losses we're experiencing in the school city are the benefits that is Bishop Knoll's receiving, and Bishop Knoll's enrollment is one of the highest it's been in a long time, and they're thriving. So, I know we have a lot going on in the school city of Hammond. You know, we all feel horrible about what's going on there, but there is some good news also. Bishop Knoll's doing very well. And it was good to have a meeting with Paul. Thank you to the council president and the city council for letting me use your area in here as a virtual press conference. This is a great... All the work that you all did with the COVID money and making this like a TV studio was... It's... I know you guys know. It's spectacular when you're behind there, but that press conference we held was viewed by, I checked this morning, over 45,000 views, 800 comments, 175 shares. That was also about the school city situation. That was the day that it was announced, the day after it was announced that three of our high schools would... Oh, excuse me.
I see.
The day after it was announced that three of our elementary schools would be closed. That was the day we had it. I want to thank the council. Had Take Your Kids to Work Day. It was really nice. A lot of people took their kids to work that day. Had lunch with Superintendent Scott Miller, obviously, about what's going on with the elementary school situation. Met with American Structure Point. Had an update about their projects across the city of Hammond. Met with the CEO of Great News Life. It's his... We have a partnership with them, and they do a lot of great news for us, which is the reason they're called Great News Life. Met with the owners of the data center. You know, there's a lot going on across the state of Indiana with data centers right now. South Bend, Fort Wayne, major data center announcements, putting ours to shame. Ours was in the ground first, and it's sort of sat there ever since it's been in the ground. We were told big numbers. Those numbers, it's approaching the number. I know it's probably in the $50 million ballpark assessed value-wise, but what's going on in South Bend, what's going on in Fort Wayne should be our goal. They're announcing billion-dollar deals with companies like Amazon and Microsoft. And, so, I met with the CEO, the new owner of the data center, Mr. Riordan also. I met with Tom Dockets recently, trying to shake them loose, try to figure out what's going on and why we're not blowing up, because it doesn't make sense to me that that data center isn't exploding like it is in Fort Wayne and South Bend and La Porte. Chicago's right there. Makes no sense to me. So, I'll report back to the council as we learn more on that. First pitch at Hermits Park was wonderful. Councilman Kowinski's wife was there that day. It was really probably the best opening day we've had in a long time. We've been meeting internally on FOP negotiations. I know I've been talking to the council about FOP negotiations. Had actually a meeting today with the FOP for our second round of contract negotiations, and we're chipping away. It's... The dialogue is positive. That's good. The issues are tough. You know, they want big raises, and we're, you know, trying to limit that because we need great officers that are happy and doing their jobs. So, anyway, that's going on right now. I'm sorry about the long report. There's been a lot going on. CEO, I spoke with the Hammond Optimist Club. That was great. Councilman Ricos, thank you for inviting me there. Met with the police captains as my normal meeting with them. Another big issue that we're gonna have to worry about down the road, well, you know, when we hear more from federal government, is lead service lines. I know we hear about this, and this definitely applies to a city like Hammond. So, when you read across the country about lead service lines, we have about 23,000 of them in Hammond, okay? Not my house, because my house was built in the 80s, but if your house was built before the 80s, you probably have lead service lines, and you've probably had them since the beginning of time, since you moved into that house, and you never got sick, because we pull our water from a clean source of... A source, it's Lake Michigan, and you have an additive that we add to our water that develops a film layer that protects all of us. So, the fact you have lead service lines is not affecting you right now. It did affect the residents of Flint, Michigan, however, but what happened in Flint was a lot different than the situation we have here. For instance, they switched from lake water to the Detroit River, and they pulled their water from there. Obviously, the Detroit River is more caustic than the Great Lake, and when they put this new caustic water in their lead service lines, it ate away at that little microscopic film and caused leaching of lead into their water. We're not planning on changing our source of water ever. You know, that would be like if we switched from Lake Michigan water to the Grand Calumet River. We'll never do that, I promise you. We got beautiful Lake Michigan right there. We're not gonna switch our source of water. However, we have about 23,000 lead service lines in the city of Hammond. You know how much it costs to replace all 23,000 of those lead service lines if we did it this year? About $280 million. So, there's some talk going on in Washington, DC about what we're gonna do about this. There's some talk in Indianapolis about what we're gonna do about this. The Hammond Water Company is doing about $2 million worth of work on lead service lines this year, okay? If we do $2 million every year, in about 125 years, we'll wrap up, okay? This is a major problem. It's a major issue. It's not a problem. It's just a major issue, and it's super, super ridiculously expensive for a city like Hammond. If you think it's expensive here, how much you think it's gonna cost in Chicago? If it costs $280 million in Hammond? So, I guess what I'm gonna say to you is, when you hear about lead service lines, I have a feeling we're gonna hear more from Washington, DC on this issue, and we should probably continue to chip away at the problem like we're doing, but you will hear more about this. And I'm just previewing you. This is coming. And keep in mind, we still have... That's the water side. We still have on the sanitary side the consent decree from the federal government that was estimated at $215 million. It has to be done within the next 10 to 15 years. So, those two projects, they're not gonna get done this term probably, but they're out there, and they're not gonna go away because they're being pushed by President Biden and Washington, DC and the EPA, and it affects a city like ours. So, let's keep monitoring that, but I don't see anything happening in the next three and a half years. So, I'm not sure if you have any questions. I know Councilman Berry looked like he was gonna ask a question. No?
I just had a question, going back to something you said earlier about the data center.
Yes, sir.
And I think there was, at one point, there was conversation of creating another one in downtown Hammond as part of downtown.
That's a separate issue, Councilman. I appreciate that, though. But, that issue is more related to part of the resolution that you have pending before you tonight. But, that's through the data center and a line that goes downtown. That's a completely separate issue. This is more, why isn't that campus making major announcements with Amazon and with Microsoft like I'm hearing about in other parts of the state when we have a data center in a campus right here in the first district? It's a campus. I honestly think 30 years from now, if we could fast forward and take a picture of what Hammond will look like, that site will be all computers, if I had to guess. It'll be computers and electric generating to serve it, and it'll be worth a lot of money. Not a lot of employees, a lot of computers. That'll be worth a lot to our... I think that's the highest and best use of that land, so personally. I know I have a lot. I'm sorry. I'm almost done. FOP did that keynote writing Robert Stilts' Crime Watch. That was great. Thanks, Bonnie Henry. Informational session with the school city of Hammond was outstanding. I know a number of the council members were there. I thank Scott Miller for doing that. Met with the new CEO of Lake Shore Chamber of Commerce, Kim Malezker, and the board chairman, Bob Binklerini. And I think I got everything. If you have any questions, I apologize. I try not to give long reports, but it's been three weeks since we talked. So, hi, Councilman.
Hi. The lead service lines, does that mean from the city's water line to the houses?
Yes, sir. It's different than wastewater. They're talking about the city's responsibility for that councilman would be from the street into the house. And then, once it hits the main line in the house, that's where it would end. But, it's different when we have water issues where it blows up in the yard. We're like, hey, but if that's part of the deal, they're gonna have to work out. That's accurate, right, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
Okay? That's... It's... Each house is estimated at like $15,000 for this, and we would be responsible. $15,000 times 23,000, it's $280 million.
And the new houses going in at Clark Field, they don't have to worry about that?
Anything built after the 80s. My house was built in like 1981. My lines are not led. But, if they were, I promise you, I would not be nervous at all, okay? I would not be nervous at all if they were led. I wouldn't care. I would still think it's a heavy-handed mandate coming from DC, but that's what it is. But, I don't want anybody with lead lines to be scared. We have lake water. We put that additive in. You've had them in your house since you've lived there. So, like, this is not... But, you're gonna start to hear about this, and it affects a city like Hammond a lot.
And in a kind of related way, a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, brought up the sanitary districts programs. You said you'd do some follow-up.
Yes, thank you. I should've put that in my notes. I got briefed this morning. Mylan told me that the federal has been approved on that. Do you remember anything on that, Dean?
Just that...
Federal, they approved it.
They've kind of approved, yeah.
Do you remember, Kev?
I can't. How was that meeting?
Oh, it was staffed this morning. Yeah. Yeah. It was done this morning, Councilman. I was briefed on it. I can't give you detailed answers, but Mylan, literally this morning, the federal part has been. So, that would qualify for low-income residents that need it done, but they can't afford the $8,000 it's gonna cost. They would be able to apply through that program and get it done.
Okay. And the other program is off and running?
I believe so, yeah.
Are the...
The one that's...
Applications available to, you know, get $2,000 covered for your backflow preventer?
Right. That's all you've been... But, I'll have to follow that up again.
Because the paperwork seems to not be coming.
Okay. I'll talk to Mylan about it. Thank you. Sorry. It's hard to be ready for every answer I'm gonna get, so I apologize. But, that's been a repeat. So, any other questions? Thank you, guys. Nice to see you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Councilor Scholarship drawing.
We're gonna hold off till the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Hope you don't start the next meeting. Approval of minutes.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Zalinas.
I move that we approve the minutes from the April 22nd meeting. Place them on file.
Good motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who will have claims?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated April 23rd, 2024, and ending with claims dated May 8th, 2024. Claim number 3758 through claim number 4302 inclusive in the amount of $21,116,257.54. I so move.
Second.
Good motion and a second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rinkles.
Yes. Passes 0 and 0. Public hearings, we have none. Any communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. Two items. One is the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will have a meeting Tuesday, May 28th at 6:30 at the Mohawks, 141st and Calumet Avenue. And it's a very important meeting because the Indiana Department of Environmental Management will be coming to that meeting to talk about contaminated property at 3141st Street and their involvement in the cleanup and oversight of that property. And so, they'll be here to talk about the steps they will take and timeframes, et cetera. So, the neighborhood is very much concerned about that property and is invited and will be trying to get the word out a number of ways because this is their opportunity to hear about how that might affect 400 kids playing ball across the street and their parents and grandparents as they want to do this cleanup soon. So, that's one. Thank you. The other is the Hammond Mohawks, again, will be sponsoring the Memorial Day Parade, which will be on Monday, May 27th, and lineup will be at Goslin between Calumet and about Henry. Lineup starts at 10:00 AM, and then stepping off will be at 11:00 AM. Everybody's invited to participate or to donate to the cause. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
This is kind of a question for Councilman Kowinski in a way. Our next scheduled council meeting is November 27th. I'm sorry, May 27th, and that's Memorial Day. And I was gonna make a motion on the new and unfinished business for the 28th. Would that screw up that meeting you're talking about?
Well, that will only screw me up because I'll have to be at that meeting, too. So, I let the president know about that. I would entertain a Wednesday if that would be something that suits everybody else, but I have to be at that.
It's fine if that's what the people want. If you guys want to do it on a Wednesday, that's fine.
We can bring that up, the one, the new and unfinished. I don't know for sure that we're... This room is available at this point. I checked for Tuesday.
Well, I was gonna bring up the change and the new and unfinished, but I just, when he brought that up about that meeting that night.
All of you would be invited to that meeting, by the way. It's an important one.
Thank you. Anybody else have any communications?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yep.
I have three items here tonight. The first being that I'll be hosting my summer cleanups. I've put together dates and times, and I'm pairing up with both the city of Hammond as well as Home Depot. We will be looking for volunteers. The first cleanup is on June 8th. All the information will be listed on both Go Hammond website as well as social media, so please take a look at it. My second item is a thank you to the Public Works Department, the lighting crew specifically. I've noticed in the second district that several of our ornamental lights have been repaired, and I want to say thank you to the guys for coming out and repairing them lights in the areas in which were listed. So, thank you. The third item that I have is I want to make mention that I received several calls regarding odors or stench coming from the Hammond Sanitary District retention basin. And I did reach out to the administrators at the Hammond Sanitary District, and I'd like for the residents that did contact me with those concerns to rest assured that the administrators are coming up with a plan to apply a type of deodorizer. So, just be a little bit more patient. I believe that this is in the works. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just one last item, and that is that parade that runs along Goslin on May 27th. I want to say thank you to the mayor again for getting some of the lights up, but we still have five down missing on Goslin between Calumet and the Roundabout. Perhaps they are waiting for another shipment, but just want to let you know, and thank you for getting that done. And also, of course, you're invited to the meeting at Pulaski Park with item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Tyler.
I want to just go on record and thank the International Association of Firefighters, Local 556, and President Mike Hall for repairing the damage done to MLK Park a couple of weeks ago, which, of course, in partnership with our mayor, allowed for the park to open back up just after a weekend of being closed. So, thank you to the firefighters for their continued service for our city and our parks. And I also want to announce that Anthem is hosting a Community Health and Resource Fair, May 25th at Harrison Park from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There'll be free health screenings and information, local resources, blood pressure, diabetes, mental health, so on and so forth. And there's, if you would like more information or sign up as a vendor, you can call 773-962-7008. Once again, that's 773-962-7008. Sorry, I have two more. The mayor and the city's Juneteenth program will take place on June 19th, 2024, at 10:00 AM. The ceremony will begin at MLK Freedom Plaza, and then the rest of the program, the rest of the event, will take place, I believe, on the other end of the park. And then, lastly, the Seventh Annual Hammond Alumni Cats Golf Outing at Wicker Park will take place on Friday, July 12th, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM with the noon shotgun start. The cost is $75 per golfer or 300 for a foursome. There'll also be a cookout that weekend with a DJ and free items that they'll be giving away. So, just want to... This is, like I said, Seventh Annual. They've been doing this for quite a number of years, and proceeds from the golf outing will go to a scholarship back to Hammond students. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tyler. Anybody else? HC3 wanted to remind everybody, the Hessville Spring Cleanup is this Saturday from 9 till 12. Morton High, Scott Middle School students, faculty, community leaders, Home Depot community team, Hammond Rotary Club, HC3 members, and local volunteers are all meeting at the Hanson Community Center at 9:00 AM, Saturday, May 18th, for a spring cleanup. Please join us. And anybody here that would like to join us, feel free. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
The Capital Improvement Board met on May 6th, 2024. We dealt with five options, and funding allocation, number one was funding allocation for 415 Sibley Street temporary parking design with NICE engineering in the amount of $13,560. The next one was funding allocation for Holman North Approach at Sibley, change order number one, Reef Riley Construction in the amount of $1,755.70. Item number three, funding allocation for Holman Avenue Reconstruction, change order number 18, Reef Riley Construction in the amount of $106,493. Item number five, funding allocation, or four, funding allocation, Summer Street, CCMG Indianapolis to 165th, change order number one, Reef Riley Construction in the amount of $40,713.50. Item number five, funding allocation for Marble Street, State Line to Walbash Avenue, AES for $19,105. And that's our Capital Improvement Board.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. A community watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, June 12th, 1:00 PM. East Hammond-Pulmon Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, May 21st, 6:00 PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch is off for the summer because they use the school. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, June 4th, 6:00 PM at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June 20th, 6:00 PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch is off for the summer because school is closed. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch only meets twice a year, so they will not meet again until October. And the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June 13th, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. I, once again, would like to extend an invitation to all of our residents to attend a community or crime watch meeting. As you all know, we are the eyes and ears of our police department. They can't be everywhere at all times, so please, I encourage you to call 911 when you see something that just doesn't seem right, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Ordinance, third reading, final passage. Ordinance, third reading, final passage.
They weren't called out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go back to committee reports. Anybody want to bring out an ordinance or two?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That was my fault.
Mine as well. Yes, council as a whole will be bringing out 2409 and 2410.
Thank you. How is there any other committee report?
Ordinance number 24 dash 09, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. And ordinance creating a new fund, fund number 2485, for Indiana Department of Homeland Security EMS Training Grant Funds awarded to the Hammond Fire Department.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of 2409.
Second.
Second by Councilman, Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Yes, this ordinance simply establishes a new line item. So when the, the funding comes in for the EMS training grant, we have a specific line to put the, put the dollars there.
Thank you. Any other discussion, discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. 2409 passes nine zero.
Ordinance 24 dash 10, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. And ordinance creating a new fund, fund number 2484, for HUD Home Investment Partnership Program, part of the American Rescue Plan Funds awarded to the City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of 2410.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Same as the last one, we're simply developing a new fund or line item. So when the funding comes in for, from the American Rescue Plan for the HUD Home Investment Program, we have a specific line for those funds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. 2410 passes nine zero.
President Rakels, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Introduction of ordinances, we have none today. Next up, resolutions.
Resolution 24 R dash 07, sponsored by Councilman Emerson. A resolution authorizing the City of Hammond to submit an implementation grant for safe streets and roads for all.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
We passed this, this is a grant that adopted the Vision Zero policy that would reduce...
We need a motion. We need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion to, to amend the previous?
No, we just need a motion for 24 seven. We need a motion.
Okay. I move that we vote on 24 R oh seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. We passed the ordinance for the grant that adopted the Vision Zero policy that would reduce fatalities and serious injuries by 40% by the year 2035. Thank you to Dean Button for organizing the great handout that we all read.
Would you like to amend this ordinance?
I would like to amend.
I'm sorry.
I would like to amend this resolution under discussion. Like to amend the previous ordinance and replace it in its entirety.
You'd like to, 24 R seven, you'd like to replace it with 24 oh seven A in its entirety?
Twenty-seven, or 24 R oh seven A, yes.
In its entirety? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman, Councilwoman Vanez. Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President.
Yes. Top of the second page.
Yeah, I'm guessing we'll be including a full version of the plan connected to the resolution. Is that correct?
We understand 24 seven A was necessary because of a typo at the second page of 24 seven.
Mr. President, I believe to answer his question, we're just passing the resolution. There is no plan attached to it, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Okay. Yeah, this is just a resolution for today.
It's a resolution that allows you to move forward, correct?
Okay, so 24 seven A is up for further discussion. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. 24 seven A passes nine zero.
President Rakels, that concludes the ordinances for resolutions for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Okay, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Yes. Councilman Warple.
Like I stated before, we have a scheduled meeting on May 27, that is Memorial Day, so I was going to make the motion to move it to the 28. And there's another meeting that night. I know on the 29, the BZA has the council chambers at 6 o'clock and what's the council's pleasure as to when we move it?
Maybe we could consider an earlier time on a, on Tuesday or another day if the, if this isn't being used?
I was going to suggest maybe 4:30 or 5, but we have the scholarship thing that night too? The next meeting?
Yes.
With a 4:30 or a 5 o'clock start, would that give you enough time to make the other meeting?
4:30 would be good.
How does the rest of the council feel about that?
I'm retired. I don't care. Me and you don't, me and you don't work. We could ride together.
The rest of the council can make a 4:30 meeting on the 28th? Is that the, what you're looking for?
Caucus would be at 4. Fine with me if everybody else is okay with it.
Is that okay with all the other? Non-retired, semi-retired councilmen? Does that work?
4:00 p.m.
All right, 4:00 p.m. on. So your motion is?
To make a motion that we reschedule the meeting for May 28 with caucus at 4:00 p.m. and the meeting at 4:30.
Second.
All right, second, move, motion and a second. May 28, next meeting, we may 28 at 4:30 with caucus at 4 o'clock?
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Sir President.
Yes.
Thank you, Judge Counsel, for considering that.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? We'll do a roll call. What's that?
No.
Second.
Excuse me. Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Meeting, May 28 at 4:30. Any other new and unfinished business?
That's caucus at 4.
If you so wish. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Next up, public expression. Somebody signed me up, but I think I'll pass. George Stoya.
Don't look at me.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. I was glad to see the mayor so jubilant about the well-being of Bishop Knoll High School and no doubt the drain of our public school students into its classrooms. It would have been nice to hear some details from the council here of your meeting with Scott Miller, I think that's his name, the school superintendent. Nobody knows what's going on. All we hear is complaints out of the school city. Does he have a plan? Could you guys share it with us? Could you put some pressure on him? We've got a brand new high school sitting over there across the street and we're hearing about the coffers and classrooms of Bishop Knoll getting filled. Wow, great news. Do you guys know anything? Is there anything going on? I mean, if what the mayor says is true, we're going to have all these costs coming down. What's he going to pay another visit to Fast Eddie Soliday out of Valparaiso and get another tax pass? Or two, maybe three? It's easy now. Just get some more local taxes. I don't hear anything out of you guys.
Thank you, George. Next up, TJ, Gertik.
Good afternoon, everyone. How's it going?
Hey.
Ken wanted me to pass along that he regrets that he can't make it today. He's on the radio, 92.7, talking about Governor's Parkway and Briar East Woods. But I wanted to talk about, so I, I work at, I work at the oil refinery and I work outdoors and I wanted to let you know it's been raining a lot. And, and you know, it's got me thinking, you know, last year we saw all the effects of flooding and I just wanted to, I was doing some research, just doing some Googling and I saw that an adult tree can soak up in one growing season 11,000 gallons of water. And if you multiply that by 30 acres, you get the amount of water the Briar East Woods soaks up. And not only do the trees take water and transpire it back into the air, but roots that go down deep offer a passageway for water to get down into the water table. Now, the opposite happens if we replace it with pavement. And that's what would happen if we went through with Governor's Parkway Development. And the grant application even included, as you're all aware, a subdivision planned, which would be even more pavement. And so I just want to impress upon you that this project is not locked. Endot is still doing surveys or they're, they're still in the process of the ecological survey and the Grand Avenue underpass, but they already gave us the numbers for an overpass on Grand Avenue. And I think it was $8 million, if I remember correctly. And the Governor's Parkway was 11. You can look, you can look online. It's the presentation from the Endot public hearing last April. The PowerPoint's on there with all the numbers. And then if you tack on an additional pedestrian bridge for $5 million, it makes the underpass or it makes the overpass on Grand, Grand Avenue half the cost of the combined Governor's Parkway and pedestrian bridge. Okay? This is not locked in place. You can help your community, the people that you represent, prevent flooding. You can help to not make it worse with more development. Hessville had people in kayaks several years ago in the, in the river that was in the street in front of their house. And if you go uphill to Briar East Woods and you pave it, there's another, there's another alternative you guys can push. It's cheaper and you know all the others.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, Jenna, and I'm not, I don't think I'll be able to say your last name.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jenna. This is my first time at a city council meeting, so I'm really glad to be here and see all these faces. I wanted to speak today a little bit about the Briar East Woods. I live in the apartments right behind them and they truly are a gem in this city. With all the industrialization that surrounds us and all the, you know, the heavy traffic and the highways, this is really rare and special to the community. It's not just me. I have a sister that's in high school and she would also love to see these woods remain. I know that these woods provide an escape from the noise. It's a sense of peace for us. So besides all the issues that could come out from these woods being destroyed, I would like you to consider the sense of peace that would be removed from your residents, from the City of Hammond residents. And we all would just love to see the woods remain. So yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. We have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.